Wind was, you know, out of the south. But. Actually. Yeah, you stayed out.
Follow on. Thank you, Bob.
It did. Thank you, but it only lasted about. I don't know forty seven minutes.
That's a big.
Yeah.
I had a friend over there. They went out and did the ten K that morning. Around the lake. Mm hmm. Especially when it was coming out of the north, you get around the north side of that lake, there's not a whole lot blocking it.
No.
He's been miserable for a few days afterwards.
Sucking in a lot of cold air.
Yeah. He said the worst part was is the cold on his eyes. And it made his eyes start watering and then his tears were freezing to his cheeks.
Oh, thank you.
That was bad. Me and the dog went for a mile walk and I thought that was bad enough. The dog was happy.
I walked to my car and that was enough for me.
Down, down the road, I didn't go for around the little section, but.
Saturday morning. It was like a negative ten wind chill. It is. Do we stand and say to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I see no public today. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda in the minutes dated March fourteenth? So move. Motion by Carter, second by Decker. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Unanimous. Discussion to, a decision to review and approve claims and conservation claims. You had them on the iPad. Everybody had a chance to look at them. Anything, anybody have any irregularities?
I had a question, just I didn't know what it was. On. Gardner, what does Gardner Thompson?
That's our auditing.
Oh, that's okay, okay.
That's a company name.
Okay.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the claims and conservation claims?
Don't move.
Mr. Decker moves to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wachter. Any? Comments on them? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried unanimous. It is the twenty first today. Well, they all come, that was all turned ahead, heavy time.
Do you want to sign it or just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. No, that's another one. I don't want to sign it.
No, that's why. I got another one here. Says Bolton, Maine. This one says I'll go on a plea PD. I was damned this morning.
Good.
Good. So are you Irish? That you celebrated?
Well, I'm more Scottish than I am Irish. So you had a Scotsman in an Irish place that. Back in the day, that did go over so well. I did well for the home team.
There you go.
Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Okay, well, uh. Just some updated metrics for the month of February for my department. Uh, we had forty eight phone calls and sixty six messages. Uh, we had fifty walk-ins, thirty scheduled appointments. One of those outside the office, I did a home appointment. Uh, we did three training reports and for some odd reason, we had a run of getting hearing aid repaired. Eight of them for the month. Uh, currently in my system when I'm tracking is eleven hundred and thirty three records so far. I usually add about between two and five a week or thereabouts. Uh. Number of claims that are in the system to be a right now is forty eight. Uh, six are ready for a decision. I keep checking those daily. Uh, number of claims under development, which I'm currently working on is eight. Uh, I'm in the process of two supplemental claims and appeals. And we had to be a healthcare home base. Uh, and then insofar as training. I am reserved for our spring conference in Des Moines. That'll be at the Holiday Inn down by the airport this year as post-identity sweeps. Uh, we also have some new CBSO training coming up. That is also falling in line with our spring conference. Uh, reserved for the national conference out in Wisconsin. That'll be in Madison in June. And then working to develop the agenda for the spring training for the new CBSOs. As far as outreach, been working with our commissioners. Going to do a veterans information night. At the Summit Center in Bancroft, April sixth. And we're going to do one, one session from two to three and another one from six to seven. And it's just going to be a basic overview, an update on the PACDAT. With all those changes as it applies to the different generation of veterans. And then a little bit of information on the, uh, VA healthcare enrollment and encouragement to do so. Uh, still working with the Iowa Workforce Development on the Veteran Military Appreciation Day in Spencer. Uh, that'll be held on June seventeenth. We have another meeting, I think, in April. I'm just waiting for the agenda. Um. Continuing to develop the PSA and the ads for commissioner selection. Uh, the goal in working with the commissioners is to advertise April and May. Do the selection interview in June. Do the swearing in and onboard in July. It's kind of the timeframe that they wanted to go with. Uh, did provide a couple handouts. Just wanted to kind of show you this. For the PACDAT, this is something that National puts out. Uh, interestingly to note, uh, I don't think they were quite as prepared for this as far as VA. There's an eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-one claim backlog. Uh, of which three thousand, four hundred and ninety is one of that is, is Iowa. So. Things have really picked up under that recent legislation that was signed by the president. And then I also just provided you a, a, uh, twenty twenty-two National Veteran Suicide Prevention Annual Report. Mental health is getting a lot of attention in the VA circles. And, uh, right now there were sixty-one hundred and forty-six vet suicides, uh, for twenty twenty. Now, that's actually down three hundred and forty-three from twenty nineteen. So it's trending down. But VA also recognizes that there's a lot of more work to do. And I see a lot of that in, in some of my claims. Uh, especially with our younger veterans that are suffering from ATMs. Uh, but the trend is, is going down and that's what they're looking for. So that's a good thing. Uh, the other thing was, I just provided you a, uh, emergency treatment, uh, kind of a flyer that I've been handing out to veterans. So if I have veterans that are enrolled in VA healthcare and they're fully vested. If they have an emergency medically and they need to be seen by a hospital locally. And being treated in a civilian facility, this kind of. Walks the dog, if you will, by calling a hotline number. And what this does is it triggers action for consideration payment. By VA to help with some of those calls. And so I'm trying to push that out there. Make sure that, uh. The veterans are aware of it. I know our regional hospital is aware of it. They've actually got it posted in their emergency room. Um, the community process excellence folks out there and the billing folks are getting a lot better. And understanding the various levels of care that are paid for by the. So making some headway in that. Uh, subject to your questions, that's all I've got. Uh, gonna start picking up a little bit more now that the, the weather's getting nice and. Bats are getting out. So. That's what I got going.
Nice. Do you have any like, um. Information or handouts or whatever for your outreach activity like?
I do. I just have to print them off. There, there are several flyers and, and what VA has done. Uh, because PACDAT covers a lot of them. So they made some flyers that said, okay, if you're of the Vietnam War era, here's how you're affected by this. If you're a Persian Gulf veteran, here's how you're affected by this. And so there's different flyers and I'm, I'm looking at printing about twenty to twenty-five. Uh, of each of those to be able to hand out. And I'll be taking my appointment book with me. And then that way, if the veteran on site says, hey, I'd like to set an appointment. Come down, see you next week. We can get it captured. Go ahead and get that taken care of.
If you think of it when you're printing them out, if you want to send to us an email, because I could maybe put some of that on Facebook and stuff too.
Oh, awesome. Okay. Yeah, absolutely. You bet. You bet. There's about three or four.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, sounds good. Oh, okay. Okay. All right, well, do you bet? Thank you.
Yep.
Good week.
Next on the agenda is to approve, approve the certificate of payment for the retainer to the courthouse roof project.
Thanks. We'll pick them and appreciate any questions you should have on the information.
Engineer walked it and it looks like he said everything's good. We've had no issues at all, have we?
Done.
Um, so I did want to talk to you a little bit about when this project was approved by ARPA. The only information that was given to ARPA for approval was the actual rough project, uh, the engineering results. So ARPA approved the hundred and eighty-six thousand, um, but ARPA did not. Know about the engineering. Some of the engineering costs have been paid out of ARPA, which is fine. So, um, what I want to know from you guys is if you want me to. Take the remainder of that amount out of our building project one regular, which. We have plenty of money in there. Or if you want me to present that amount back to ARPA. Um, which we're going to be close and all they're not, we have enough funds or not to see if they'll approve that additional amount as well.
I would say just take it out of the building.
And that's kind of where I was leaning, but I just kind of.
Do we need to update the resolution for this stuff to get the stuff that's already been paid for?
Yes. So what we'll probably do is just have another one that, another resolution that adds that amount in so that there's no issues in what, what it's been paid for.
Okay.
And, and the amount won't change. It'll still be the same amount, um, but just so there's no. Issues.
Yeah, not to exceed nineteen thousand, five hundred.
That, but that wasn't in the resolution. The resolution only addressed the rough cost, not the architect. So.
What, do we know what our total architect costs are? Cause I know I saw that nineteen five in the thing.
Yeah.
But twelve hundred on that nineteen five.
Yeah, it's not even close to the.
There was some, uh, experts on something. The pitch sheet has the big forty percent.
But it's not even close to the nineteen, I don't believe, is it?
I thought so. I thought it was nineteen five plus the twelve hundred.
So that'd be over it.
There's something about billables that's on that page.
I don't think it was over.
Okay, it might not.
Well, there is. I know there is other stuff listed in there, um, that they could charge for on top of that, if I remember right with that nineteen.
No. They're not just seen nineteen, so I'm assuming.
What page was that on?
There's no page number.
Yeah, it's the last one.
Yeah. So that may, we assume that it's less than nineteen thousand, five hundred.
Whoa. And those are paid, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's up to date. We don't have anything.
We just have to retain it to the roof.
Right.
The difference comes in. We have like, I think it's six thousand or less than six thousand left in the ARPA fund. And we need like a three thousand or something.
Yeah.
To come out of building improvement to just pay off the real profit.
Yeah.
Under their fine print section, it says reproduction and distribution costs associated with bidding documents are not covered in the. Proposed not to exceed amount and would be billed at actual cost to produce. So that was, that'd be the extra potentially. I knew I saw something else that was on top of that, but.
Um. You're gonna have to come back and have a board approve it then.
The resolution, yeah. I just wanted to touch base with you and see if you were okay with that before I did that.
Yeah. Did you put on the agenda and we'll prove it and have it come out of the building?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Willie.
Sure.
But I do need you to either approve or disapprove of that.
We're gonna get there.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve your certificate of payment for the retainer to the courthouse roof, which is nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-five cents? Jack? Do I have a second? Carter? Any more discussions? Seeing none, so we'll hold on please.
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Wachter?
Yes.
Decker?
Yes.
Jerk?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimous. Okay, we have a discussion decision to approve resolution three, twenty-one, twenty-three, oh, one, which is a resolution setting the wage schedule for Cassuth County employees.
I sent you an email this morning, um, asking if we could postpone that. There's a cooney is still working on that resolution.
Is he?
Twice then. So, um, we are asking to put that on the agenda for next week.
You sent an email this morning?
I did.
I did.
Yeah, I didn't see it. Yeah, thanks. But well, I didn't look at emails this morning. Oh, there's one case you have sent one.
I have that separated out to a different folder. So, yeah, I got it now that you said that.
No, I said one to all users.
Let's say I got it. So.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And then there's the other one.
Okay.
Yeah, I separate them out.
I didn't get it. So I must not be in that all users.
Users, okay.
I, I didn't get it either.
Okay.
Derek probably does.
Seven twenty-four.
I didn't get it either.
You should get it.
You, you probably did.
Got budget.
Or supervisor. Yeah.
We've got two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do.
I, well, I had seen you sent the one on budget at seven thirty.
Well, you can tell I didn't open it.
That's okay. So, so anyway, yes, that if it's, if it's, um. Possible, we'll push that back to next week.
It is, but the agenda showed that that's moved to next week. Five minutes, excuse me. We are up to discussion appoint Cassuth County EMS member.
I got the agenda, um. Bill's here for that too, I think. But yeah, um. I talked to Bill Smith. He's willing to serve and we have a at-large seat that's available. I think he'd be. Well suited to fill that role. So. I'd make a motion to appoint him as a member for the EMS. Board.
We're gonna appoint members to the board. We should point the Albona and the Sweet City member at the same time.
They're part of the bylaws that they're going by the city, right?
Yeah, it just says with approval of the board.
Okay, yeah, we could do that too.
So as he.
Did Soy City finalize theirs or make a choice?
They picked two, so I don't know how you want to handle that.
Did they designate a primary and an alternate?
They picked two, saying they had one vote.
Dave, you brought this to the EMS board?
Um, not to the, not the individual to the board. No, um, that's our decision here. But, um. I had talked to Bill and. I had reached out.
This out this morning before I come in, so.
For Soy Cities.
So. We haven't even had a chance to discuss that. So I don't know how you want to do that one.
I don't know. Do we?
Need to postpone again, Tom.
Well, that one.
Well, we can do, we can do this one, but the next one, I would say, um, have a discussion with them and since there's two of them, have them figure out who. Be the delegate and the alternate and then.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I guess we could do, we could do Albona's too, because theirs is.
There's one.
So.
Okay.
And there's this Jacob Jaden. So we could include that too.
Today.
If, if you guys are okay with it, yeah.
On the same motion?
Yeah, on the same motion would be fine.
For proving Albona and the at-large.
Yep. And then.
But not Soy City.
Soy City, we would wait for clarification on. Primary or alternate.
So in your motion, you want to.
Agenda says individual has one name on there.
Bills, no, it says appoint EMS member.
Why don't, why don't we have a second through the motion and then discussion?
You want to point two people?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mr. Wachter, thank you.
Uh, now discussion, do you have states have a delegate? I'll just. Appointed members, so.
Well. Yeah, and.
I know that's not part of your motion, but that's definitely later.
Well, I don't have an issue with Soy City having two people as far as they're concerned, but. They're still only going to have one vote, so.
So what do your bylaws say on that for?
Just says that the city council shall appoint. Their representative, yeah.
Yeah. We could tell them just to pick one call of the day. But I guess I don't have an issue with them having an alternate if someone can't make it, so.
I think that'd be beneficial to have one selected as primary and one as the delegate. Because that would count as their one representative.
Well, you would, you would have to have that if you had to, or we just say there's only one.
But once you change your bylaws, you're going to only have one voting delegate if I remember it.
Well, yeah, yep.
So. There's going to have to be a decision.
Hey, the wording of the bylaws things, you, they appoint one member.
Yeah.
I don't, I did not bring the topic over, but.
I mean, the, the, the language of a delegate versus a appointed member, same meaning, so that I wouldn't worry about, but. Um. One versus two is the difference, yeah.
But regardless, we could wait.
We should wait for that.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
So the motion today is for Mr. Jaden and Mr. Smith.
Yep.
To be appointed to the EMS. Board.
And that's not what the agenda said. It says Bill Schmidt.
That's in the, that's in the packet. That's not the agenda.
This is a VMS member.
Yeah.
And they say letters.
It's. That's not something that makes the agenda item invalid. The, the point of the topic. Is. Easily conveyed to, to the public by EMS member versus members. It's the same topic.
If you. Feel more comfortable, we could put Mr., uh.
We can wait for.
Jaden until next week and.
That's fine.
That's with the, the others, I. Is that fine with everybody?
You, would you prefer it that way? Yeah, I don't really care, but.
But we'll do it that way.
Yeah.
So today, is there any more discussion on Bill Smith?
You need to amend your motion then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine with amending it.
You're fine with the second?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Bill Smith is an EMS member. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Post. Motion carried unanimous.
Do you want me to do an agenda request or can you sit there?
Bill, are you going to touch base with Soy City? Figure that out.
At least.
Perfect.
So how do you want to word that? Do you want to just tell them I have to have one or can I have a primary to delegate? Often that I guess would be a better word, alternate.
Alternate would probably be a better word.
Delegate, alternate, then.
As long as you understand, they only have one voting member.
Yeah.
And they stated that this morning, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
They just had to point two rather than one.
Yeah. Designated voting member. Something like that. That's really where it comes down to, isn't it?
One winner.
Yeah.
Really up to.
One winner.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
As long, yeah, as long as. As long as they know it's one vote, I mean.
Yeah. Oh, we are up to the board of adjustment. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
You have any date for public discussion?
No, just, uh. Your next item, Jim will not be present. He's spelled ill, so he wasn't going to come down. So he would appreciate your approval of that. That's all we have.
Okay. He's hiding behind the pole for you.
They like to hide behind the pole.
I stood over there. I can't see every, she looks a lot better than the thing.
I didn't even know he was there. You, you're hidden real well, Jake.
You just made my face.
Huh. I can't believe that you'd say something derogatory about my looks.
Yeah, but I got everybody to laugh.
You did.
Including you, so it must be all right.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd have to agree with him. Although it hurts me terrible.
I got a lot of cheers. I can keep moving to the right, Roger. All of those are not related to the left.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning. We hear great welcome.
Shut up your traffic handles, stretch them slits this morning. All right. All right, very good.
I think you split out of yourself, though.
People get past. Well, we're, we're about to break from the doubts.
I was told that last year, though. I even.
All right. Yeah.
First thing we have on the agenda is to appoint Jim Haldorfer to the Board of Adjustment.
Yeah, last, uh, at the last meeting, board meeting. I was that little bit. I wasn't sure exactly how the. Language, uh, read as far as, uh. Being a member of both the Board of Adjustment and Zoning Commission. Um, on a little bit of research. It is in, it's addressed in the. Uh, comprehensive plan and it does say at least one member of the Board of the Judgment shall also be a member. Of the Cassuth, of the county zoning commission. So I don't think there's any kind of a conflict with that and. Uh, I do have a motion. I think it's in your electronic packet.
Yep.
Proven, appoint, approve of and point Jim Haldorfer for Bancroft, Iowa, the Cassuth County Board of Adjustment.
I would make that motion to improve Jim. Is there a second? Okay. Second by Jack. Second by Jack. Any big decisions?
I guess just for the, the commission and the Board of Adjustment, side by side, don't they kind of? Doesn't the Board of Adjustment make decisions outside of what planning and zoning has approved? And that kind of the nature of it? For variances.
Variances, additional use. So yeah, so. They do, but they look at the zoning ordinance and, and they, uh, if, if there's reasons, they do grant it.
So you feel it would be good to have two members on ball? Above and beyond the one, or?
I.
Or would that be a? Conflict since they kind of. Go against each other in that regard?
Hmm, I don't think.
If there, if there is conflict, then you can certainly abstain from voting. I, I've never encountered, having, having said that, I've never encountered a situation where the one. Board member. One zoning commission member. Felt that there was. A conflict with any kind of a. Board adjustment activity.
Okay.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, do a roll call vote quickly.
Class.
Yes.
Mass.
Yes.
Lactor.
Yes.
Stacker.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes, motion carried unanimous. Gravel pits, Doug.
Uh, yes, we have, and I, it is in your. Electronic folder. We have, uh, I believe it's five gravel pits, there's multiple motions under and a table of all of the leases that we have.
Thank you.
So we have, uh. Returned to us. We've had, uh, Dollhauser, Hank, Dornbeer, Matt, we just took care of Cory Hagan, Zach Nielsen, and I think it's Katie Blackwin. I put a table there that had the. Previous three-year lease. And who had that, who the tenant was, and who the new tenant. Is and what their, uh, rent is. So I, I prepared separate. Motions. For all of these approving of an authorizing the board shares a sign.
Do you care what order we do it in?
I do not.
The first one I got up here is Dollhauser. Lease.
As long as both Tammy and I know.
Okay, with more shit. Township sixteen.
That's over, with more, yes, uh, with more pits.
I'll make a motion to.
Do I have a second on the? With more fit?
Second.
Second by plan, any discussion? All those in favor of approving, but approving the lease, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Motion carried unanimous. The next one is Matt Durember. He's even sitting here. Hancock County.
No, this is, uh, McGuinness gravel pit. Uh, this would be right north of the Irvington gravel.
Got the wrong one. Anybody have any questions on it?
I'd make motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Second by laughter. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimous. The next one is Cory Hagan. Fairfield Township, Palahalta County.
This is the Zell pit, uh. It's a quarter section there in Palahalta County.
Anybody have any questions on it? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
So after makes a motion, who seconds?
Jack.
Jack seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimous. Next one is Zachary Nelson, and it's Orthal Township, Hancock County.
That's Monte Two, which is right there by the, uh, Hancock County gravel pits, kind of north and west of that.
Any, any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion. Motion by class, second by. Matt? Any discussion? All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
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 Post? Motion carried unanimous. The next one, David Blackwing.
Yeah, that's a small, uh, area that has some gravel in it and, uh. A little bit east of the Zell pit. Cylinder pit, so.
Any questions? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Stacker, second by.
Last.
Carter. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carried unanimous. We run out of gravel pits.
At those take care of.
Did we do?
We have not received all.
Oh, okay, okay.
Leases yet.
Okay, so I need both. Um, Roger and Tony, I will no rise.
The McNeese ran at one time, we talked about selling that.
Pardon me?
McNeese one?
Yeah, that, I'm still working in Co- and Cody, Dornbeer, uh, I need to visit with him also.
It's three acres.
Up till.
Yes.
That is awesome. Okay. I can bet that.
Way too pretty, Ben.
That. That one on the left looking towards that, it looks pretty, pretty good.
Yeah. Here's just, uh. If, if you would like to write down, uh, what bids are.
Yeah.
And on the back is a motion. Uh, if we do decide to. Sell a piece of equipment, uh, in your folder is a flyer that, uh. Was. Uh, how we advertised this truck, it is a two thousand Sterling dump truck. It, it has some problems with it, we're selling it as it is. And we received. Five. Bids on those, I'll just open them up now.
Do you have any left of straight transmissions anymore?
Pardon me?
There's none left of straight transmission?
Oh, yeah, we have.
Do you?
We do, oh, yeah.
Did you get much for questions on this one, or?
Uh, they.
Book on the look, or?
I, I directed them to the, uh, mechanic shop, so I was not very involved in it.
Yeah, just curious.
Uh, this is Ben Strugger. S T R U S C A D R. And he bids seven thousand five hundred dollars. Aaron Hunt. I shouldn't said Ben is from Titan, I'm here, I just from Brenwick. Uh, Aaron bid ten thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. Randy Ilerz. He's from Algonquin. E I L E R T S.
What was his first name?
Randy.
Oh.
Uh, he bid three thousand two hundred sixteen dollars. Rightsel Escavating. Bird. Uh, twenty-two thousand six hundred.
Big.
Good.
And Jerry Kay, I have a cylinder.
Who was that, Jerry?
Jerry, yeah. And he bid five thousand. So. Rightsel is the. I. I think that's fair price. So I recommend that we sell that piece of equipment.
And there's the, uh, set. Rightsel Escavating bid for twenty-two thousand six hundred dollars.
Motion by class, second by second, Stacker. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of motion, please say aye.
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 Post? Motion carried unanimous.
Great.
We have nothing in the folder about construction. In the right away?
There is no request for. Construction loading.
And we would be up to discussion with the county engineer and zoning administrator.
Uh, yes, construction, or to bridge, I would assume that the contractor will be moving on. Uh, soon to finish up that garden rail work and complete that, uh, bridge. Today, our asphalt work is being let, we have a project one mile from McGregor to eighteen, uh, P twenty. Then the Los Creek Road, and there's a three-mile section of road right south of the flow run. Uh, that's being let. Uh, we still have. Two open positions in the mechanic shop. We are re-advertising the same way we have, uh, previously, I did talk with Donna about accounts, we do not have any. Any web-based applications, we are not members of anything, there would be a cost with that. And, uh, we, we have not purchased any subscriptions to those.
Did you look into see what those would cost? By any chance?
Uh, I relied on Donna. I guess you'll have to ask her.
Like places like ZipRecruiter and Indeed and.
Yeah, Indeed's the big one I would have thought of, but yeah. Any of that type of stuff.
The end of last week, gravel roads, they were, uh, less desirable conditions, I drove. All day long, many miles of gravel roads, some were in better condition than others, but, uh, yesterday we came in a little bit early. Uh, started plating. Today, we're gonna employ you a little bit later in the afternoon, working a little bit of overtime, trying to get things in shape. My foreman, I did not get an opportunity to drive on any gravel roads yesterday, but, uh, Scott Bill said things were a lot better yesterday. And we are in, we still need to amend the secondary road department budget, the Algonquin Airport expansion. Uh, needs to, there is going to be letting that, uh. Project soon, if you have plans, uh, I think they're about ready to go out to bidders for that. And then from zoning, uh. The expenditures in the budget, and I emailed this to you on request of Supervisor Stecker. We have fifteen hundred dollars budgeted to expand, we have spent one thousand four hundred and sixty dollars, forty-four cents. So we have thirty-nine dollars fifty-six cents that we can spend. Or will be over budget. Bills on hand, Bancroft Register is one hundred dollars and twenty-six cents, Sway City Herald Press is one hundred dollars twenty-six cents. pursuit county advanced sixty-three dollars sixty-two cents, and the Algonquin Reminder is one hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. Uh, my addition quick on that was four hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents. So, it is difficult right now to. And planning and zoning got an amendment, so I, I would ask that. Get that budget amended. I don't know when you guys believe you will be doing that. If you could let me know, I'd appreciate it.
You need this amended before having the next.
It's meeting, or we can't make expenditures until. The budget is amended.
What's that?
Can't publish until you.
I don't know how I'm gonna, I'm trying to figure out how I'm gonna get four hundred fifty-eight dollars.
We, we do need to move forward with our. Process and, I mean, some, somehow I need to keep, keep the ball rolling here, I don't know when, whenever we planning to do.
Usually we do it in April.
Sure.
So.
Just thinking if we wait till April for the planning and zoning expenses, then it's another however many weeks till. We're presented with something from the planning and zoning, and then however many weeks till. We're presented with something from the planning and zoning and then however many weeks till. Do you?
Well.
You know.
The reason.
Pass anything.
We wait till April because that's the last budget amendment for the year.
Sure.
So we can't do another budget amendment after that. So we wait to see what other departments are doing because we don't.
Yeah, I understand that.
Let them to go over either. So that's usually why we, we wait till April to do it. And plus we have to post and publish and all that kind of stuff. So by the time we do all that, it's going to be. Month April. If we do that and it has to be done by the end of May. So I mean, we can do it anytime. Just keep in mind that. If we do it too early.
It'll impact.
But we don't want to miss anything. Unless you're gonna do two, unless you're gonna do one now that we set up now and then do another.
But that's what I'm, I mean.
But we about, that'll be, that'll make. We do that, that'll make a.
Three in a year.
And this one would be.
This one would be the second.
Right, it would be the second one, but.
When do we, what was the timeline on the first one?
That one, I think.
Can we amend just for. Planning and zoning and still wait on the other departments or?
Can.
Will that be?
It's a lot of work and a lot of extra costs.
True.
Because you have to have the carriers and publishing and the.
Yeah, amendment will cost more than what you put in planning and zoning.
Right.
It costs more than the four hundred and fifty-eight dollars is a problem.
Right now, so you can't, can you have another meeting with the planning and zoning commission, but not until. That's all. How it needs to be published.
I can't spend any money.
Right.
Uh, we. We need to spend, we still need to pay the members for the last hearing and I don't know what that's going to add up to. Uh, somebody came in with the zoning variance. This afternoon. Those get notice, public notice. It just makes it difficult.
Want to talk to Elizabeth and see if there's another way that we can do this around it. There isn't, there isn't.
Um, the, the only other thing would be to talk to all department heads and let them know that we're gonna start the bu- last budget amendment of the year if that's what you want to do. And that they need to look at their budgets very closely and see if they think they're gonna need to amend it. You know, now and because it won't, you know, be another time to do it. I mean, that would be the only other. Options, just to let everybody know that they need to look at it now and decide if they're gonna, if they have enough to, to make it through.
Well. We'd be fifty days ahead of normal.
I mean, we usually start looking at it now. We're just gonna have to expedite it, but we're just fine.
Is that your suggestion, Carter?
Uh, I don't know. It's a suggestion, but.
I mean, I understand the sense of urgency for the situation here, but. I don't wanna negatively impact everything else either. Wish we would have added more to it in November. At the last one, knowing all this was coming, but. Don't have much choice at this point, so. I don't know. I don't know if everyone will be able to. Get an accurate enough picture in short order.
Well, I think.
I guess just start the conversations. I mean, there's no harm in starting a conversation on it.
We can, we can see where everyone's at this week and then.
Okay.
Next week we can take it up from there.
Yeah.
She probably should probably do the best one I can. I, from what I'm hearing.
Yeah, we'll see what we can do.
Are any funds transferable, leave departments until the amendment or that's not possible?
Now, we can go over in the line item. That's fine, as long as you don't go over in service areas. So if he goes over in his, in, in that. Line item, but the problem is it's planning and zoning, so that's in itself its own department. So I don't know how many lines are in that department.
Well, they all add up to. All the lines add up to fourteen.
So that's the problem. You can't go over that department area or that, that service area. So by law, you, you're, you can't do that. So that's why you have to do a budget amendment first. If he had more lines in that budget, then yes, he could transfer within that budget. But because the whole budget is that amount for that department.
No, we're all seeking transfer too, right?
It's county government.
Yeah, because I mean, even, even right now notices are already over, but it's still within the.
Well, if we'll do what we can do, Doug.
Yeah.
Hey, before Doug. Rated yesterday. Take it at four o'clock. Retired. We have sixty thousand dollar vehicles. We gotta drive to that. Roger, don't divide it. We filed a writ complaint. That's what we got.
Where was the rich complaint filed?
Your office. Rodney Gray.
When was it?
Last week.
Sorry, and, and uh.
There's. It's not the only spot. There's three to five spots tomorrow. All right, thirty, three ninety street.
I saw it on the screen.
Gonna get sand or we gonna get rough?
I mean. I'm a dog, Jim.
If I fix it. I'm gonna maintain it. I'm gonna do it the way I want to do it. It's gonna be done.
There's a lot of roads that have issues, Jake. I hear.
I've been on just as many as I've ever been on. I've listened to a lot of complaints in northern Germany. It's time to get something done. Everybody says it takes a lot of dollars. You know, my lane's not short. The last forty years, I've never put full load of rock on it at one time. I micromanaged it. I got some more support. You guys got some more support, but I don't go through my lane. I go through the road. He graded it yesterday. I was through it, ready to spawn. Every one of those five spots, just move. About hit your head upstairs. So it's time to do something. Thirty years ago, I saw a lot of. I had it running up a foot deep in one spot. It probably loaded rock. I could take you to that spot this day and that's the hardest part of it. When you're out west, if you come down through the mountains and your brakes fail at the semi, what do they do? They gotta brake run. What's in the brake run? Sand. Sand is done. Sand stops you. Sand is not a factor unless it has rock with it. Guys, do what you're gonna do. My last proposal is, Amber and I talked about it. If you send the truck. And the van and furnace to fuel, we'll pay for the road stuff. Too low. Leave it at that. Think about it. You wouldn't be driving around with your seventy thousand dollar vehicle bottoming out all the time either, but I'm with it, so. Both are there. But maybe the time he's been there all year, three times to one. On their roads. While spell grades three times to one. Yeah, they probably got some more money, but. They're used, but. And they graded to my lane from the east all the time. You guys dumped it with a, or find a sand or bad spot for the east. But thank God there's rock to the east and got mixed in with it. It's gonna make one pretty good. If I had to go west all the time, I'd bet here three weeks ago, but I thought I'd let everybody else do. See what you can do. Like I said, but if we, if we foot the bill, we're gonna put it where we want it. Where. A full train. Hello?
I'll say I do not believe I've received anything from Rodney Gray. I, I will be checking up there once I go back down with you.
I had a telephone call, Roger.
Well, I, I understood it to be written, like is what I understood.
That's, that's what he said.
Yeah.
That ass guy called. Pretty guilty once. He wants to look at their road from eighteen going back to their shed out here. Says it's pretty rough and. Look at me.
I, I mean. I, yeah. I'll talk, I'll talk with him.
Yeah, I just told him I'd pass on to you.
Thank you.
But that message last week. He said he actually used checkbook system. Sometimes we wanted paid.
It's a city road.
Oh, it is. So I didn't, I told him I didn't know. I didn't know if it was.
I mean, I mean, there's, there's parts of it that are city. There's parts of it that are town.
That's what I told him. It's a kind of tricky area and I, I wasn't sure until I taught to you whether it was city or, or uh, county road.
If the state wants it, they.
He said, he said.
They can make arrangements to take over it too.
He said, you guys, I think he said the county.
We do.
Claim it.
We do.
But it is.
But it is. I mean, just that airport area, uh. There was action by the city council and there's action by the Sioux County Board of Supervisors. As portions of that road are city. Portions of that road are county.
Yeah, that's actually kind of what I thought. I can't imagine.
Part of it is, is the annex. Into the city limits again.
Anyway, I told my.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else for Doug? It might be my suggestion that you have the operators in every township. Put a map on there and their maintainers, when they're maintaining and write down some of the spots that are black.
They do.
Yeah.
They have ones.
And you know, do something. That was my suggestion, Mr. Carter, too.
We're working on it.
Yeah, but I mean, I know. So that we get something where we needed the worst. Thanks, Doug.
Thanks.
Thanks.
I want to take a break or finish.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they.
Couple of remarks here, let's do it, yeah.
Clerk for Sherman Township. We have a person that's been appointed. Alice Bird.
We have to do the appoint.
Terry Birdy.
We're gonna do the appointing. We have an appointee, I should have said, on the list.
There you go.
I'll move to appoint. Terry Birdy is. Township clerk for Sherman Township.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Carter and Whacter. Any discussion? Seeing now all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried unanimous. Prescott Township. We have Wade. Eisenbarth. Is that close?
Think so. That's what I would have said.
Yeah.
Yeah, Eisenbarth.
Okay.
I'll make motion to approve. Appoint him.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing now all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. We are up to discussion with our auditor.
Okay, so this morning I also emailed you a copy of the budget that was sent to Department of Management yesterday. For max tax levy will be in the paper on Thursday. In Algonquin and Wednesday in Antac and City City. Um. If you have any questions about anything, please let me know. April fourth is the date that is set for max tax levy hearing. At, after that max tax levy, if everything is approved, we'll set the date for. The budget hearing, which um, I have proposed for April twenty fifth. At eight thirty. I had, I am in the process of getting Adam in the engineer's office, all the information. He helps put together the charts and um, data for the. Budget presentation, so I'm working on getting that to him. Our election audit, that's great. Uh, so we're done and finalized with that. Um. So right now we're, we're working on finishing up everything and then. We'll get started on budget amendments and I'll send out an email to all the department heads so we can see where they're at and see if we can get them. At the end of every month, Melissa sends out reports to all the departments so they can look at where they are, where their fund status. Um, and then I look at all the bump to, to make, to see how we're setting for each thing. So they should have a good feel of, of where they're at. Um, they'll just have to kind of know. The, the only bad thing is if something happens that they weren't expecting, but um. At this point, we're. For March, almost. Finished with the year, so hopefully they have a decent idea of where they're sitting. So, and I will, I will double check with Elizabeth and see. Um, if there's anything. We can do in the, in the meantime, if he needs to have anything, I'll double check just to, just to see, but. I did, I don't know of anything, but. Um. I think that's, I think that's.
Jack.
Oh, just, did, everybody else get that? You know, from Nancy here, it's something, but. Signing an amendment domain. I couldn't open it up. I didn't know if anybody else.
When did that come in?
A week ago.
Sun says Sunday. It was a few days ago.
I tried to open it too and it wouldn't open.
But I can't open it.
I couldn't either.
I was able to open it.
You got it open?
Yeah. Cause I went on.
Might have been on the perky, but.
It says open with Microsoft Edge or. Well, browser when they go on, well, browser just open.
Does that show that I was listed? Cause I didn't get, I only got one on Sunday.
Yeah, Microsoft Edge it, that machine.
Well, they got different.
Yeah.
They're, yeah, than our iPads. They could probably open it because they got Microsoft.
It was in like Google Docs.
So we don't have Google Doc.
Was it?
It was, yeah. So. Yeah, I couldn't open it. Just curious whether anybody else yet.
I could, yeah, I'm in it.
Okay, okay, yeah. You have it open.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Can you go back to the email?
Probably don't have Microsoft Edge on. If you select default browser. I did.
Oh, yeah, I didn't get that.
It um, it doesn't, it won't open since can't open.
That was this Sunday? Yeah, I did not get it.
I don't know.
I also.
He that.
Mine is just that.
Five, three point five entries. Just had to try it again, huh?
I didn't, I didn't. I guess I don't know.
I'm just curious how that works.
You guys sign it, like back to it.
Uh, it goes, it doesn't go to Nancy. It goes to the um. To the state, like to be presented at State House. It's the legislature is the goal, but.
Can't sign it on here. We have to.
No, you can't. You can't.
You'd have.
I know iPads might not be able to.
No, you put your county and then your name.
Unless it's, is it available for?
It's available.
Okay.
So you don't have to. Fill in that where it says sincerely.
But I said, bottom one didn't have a get set in the domain, so I don't have to send it again.
Right. But it'll, it'll fill in. If you fill out those three compliant items that are, then.
There should be a submit button.
Yeah, I put submit.
I'll send it. I guess I'll sign it seven because.
Anything else, Drew?
Well, that was that. I just wanted to know if anybody else.
Kirk? Uh, I had. Wellness committee meeting that, or last Wednesday morning. Yes, so we're going to be changing our meeting times every month. Donna has a conflict every other month, so we have two different times depending on the month. Um, so we're gonna be having it the first Wednesday of every month now at eight thirty in the morning, like that, just consistently, so. But. Other than that, they're. They were talking about um, doing another picnic this summer and, and possibly having us grill or, or uh, and having a county. Picnic, so. Uh, weather was not nice enough to the walk around Smith Lake last week. Uh, weather was not nice enough to walk around Smith Lake last week, so that was, uh, that was about all from that. Um, I did, I did attend a meeting with some other supervisors from other states, um, South North Dakota. Um, in regards to the carbon pipeline and presented with some food for thought. Thanks to check out with Todd to see what his initial thoughts are on a couple chapters of the Iowa code and, um, but, so I need to visit with him in the coming week about that. Other than that. I actually had a quiet week.
You did not?
I did not have any meetings, so.
Oh.
I just had good some conversations with some different people, so that's.
Tom?
I did not have any meetings. Um, got juvenile detention this Friday. But, um, lot of, lot of calls and stuff, especially about the roads. Kind of normal, normal business in that regard.
I want to talk about Saturday here.
Um, yeah, we had the legislative forum on Saturday. There was kind of two parts to it. There is the, the normal main part for everyone in the public, and then there was also a meeting set up for elected and appointed officials afterwards with the same um, representatives. And during both times, I thought we had some good conversations. There was discussions about a number of bills in front of, in front of them right now, and some that have already been passed and set, but.
Who was there for representatives?
Henry Stone was not, oh, yeah, for us, it was me and Roger and Carter. Henry Stone was sick that morning, so he was not able to make it, but John Wills was there this time, but she was not last time. And Dave Rowley was there again, so we had the two of them, one for House and one for Senate. Yeah, I had good conversation, but property taxes was a big, big conversation. And one of the, one of the comments made by Wills was that this, this property tax bill is not necessarily targeted at counties like us. It's other counties that are mismanaging things, for lack of better words.
About Polk County a lot.
Well, yeah, you can say that. Um, and in response to that, I had brought a juvenile detention reimbursement by the state. Because if they want to target cities or counties that are basically spending a blank check, said Polk County would be a prime example because their detention facility runs less bed days in a year than us and gets reimbursed twice as much as we do from the state. Because they spend more money, so they just spend more because they know they'll get more back. And, I mean, we're basically punished for running efficiently. And they said, if you want to target certain counties, have at it with something like that. And I don't know if we'll get any traction on that this year, but we are, we are getting some traction on the reimbursement side of detention in general. Um, nothing is set in stone, but had several good conversations with legislators. And I think we, if, if all goes as I would hope and expect, it looks like we should get some increases in funding in that regard, which will help our detention center, which then in turn helps all the counties that are members of it, so. That's positive traction.
You should have. Now, if you don't get it this year, you never will because of the way that setup is in the House and the Senate.
I think we have a chance. I think we've got a fighting chance this year, and there's been several good conversations in having John Wills and Henry Stone in the leadership positions they're in. I think that will help. I've visited both of them about it. Um, so.
Before, it was always Polk County that always threw the monkey wrench in getting anything close to having equal share of the dollars that the state spends.
Yeah, well, we might have to try and address that next year, but if we get the funding as a whole, the biggest piece to that is all the counties and all detention centers and everything should be supportive of it because it's affecting everyone in a positive manner. It's if someone else is losing funding, they'd be the ones who'd be opposing it, but. We got a positive fighting chance this year at least, so. That's, and that's about all I got.
Uh, Wednesday I went to Des Moines. I did talk to Stone on Wednesday. And, and he said he was going to take it into consideration our issues on taxing and they're limiting our taxing. And I explained to him that what you're doing is probably going to shift tax from getting rid of supplement, it's going to shift tax from everybody to the rural. And I said, Farm Bureau's not going to like it. They're supporting it in the beginning, but they don't understand what they're supporting.
I told him that exact same sentence when I was in his office.
Yeah, and I talked to Senator Goof and Senator Brown. And Senator and House Representative Thompson. One more and I forgot now, but all with the same issue, be careful what you do, you know? The other thing I told them is, you know, the cure for too many Republicans in Des Moines is too many Republicans in Des Moines, and you start goofing everything up, you will lose your majority because it happened before, it'll happen again. And, uh, yeah, like you said, Saturday, we had a good conversation about taxes. Uh, the city was, cities were there well represented. I, I think it was a good conversation. I think they understand it, but they don't want to, they want to do something to lower property taxes is what I got out of it. I don't know what you thought. But they don't want to touch, they don't want to touch hospitals. They don't want to touch schools, and they don't want to touch anything that they just want to touch the county share. And so like we get from the cities, the sixteen percent. They took it all the way. It still wouldn't make a big difference in the county budget. So they're in a hard time.
Probably because the amount of emails they get from county supervisors is hard to noticeable compared to the emails they get for education.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or anything else.
Yeah. I think, I think that's where we can make more of an impact is being more engaged with them because they're not going to know how it impacts us unless we tell them.
Yeah.
They just no one else is gonna, no one else is gonna say it.
I think they're they, uh, they understand the issue, but they really don't understand how to address it.
That's, yeah, that's part of it.
They, they definitely see something needs to change, something needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
Something needs to happen. They're just not sure how to.
They're really I'm going to say they, they'd rather just do something to the counties because it's easier than to address anything in the school budget or the hospital budget.
Our community council.
Yeah, our extension council. You're the easiest devil.
Yeah.
Address. Anybody have anything to come before the good of the Sioux County? Anybody got any suggestions on roads?
If I did, I'd have said.
You know, I, I know a rock's more expensive, but when you look at, um, the cost of hauling, like the cost of new trucks, fuel, everything that goes into actually delivering that product, um. I, I'm not saying we can rock every road by any means, but there's definitely spots that would benefit from some level of rock rather than pouring gravel on them constantly, in my opinion.
I mean, what do you think of what I'm saying as far as?
Well, actually, actually what he said was rather interesting because, um, I don't remember the engineer's name that was presenting at the spring conference. This is tourism pictures. Let me find it. Um, or Jacob Thoreas, Washington County Engineer. Um, and one of the things he talked about was public-private partnerships. And he said he's worked, extend, him and his office have worked extensively on, um, communication in general with individuals, businesses, et cetera, that are out in the county. Some have been rock projects to stabilize gravel roads. Some of them had been paving projects for bigger companies that wanted a paved road instead of a gravel road or such like that. And having a cost-sharing type agreement, so it's not all a tax burden and.
Well, that's certainly happened here in the past, you know, the long past, long ago past. Means why some of the blacktop roads, roads are there. You're taking one north of Sexton. Just ends because parents family back when they wanted to blacktop out the grounds.
Yeah. So that might be something we could explore more. I mean, we had an offer today. If, if we haul the material, they'll pay for it. I mean, that's probably a small example, but I don't know if that's something we can work on and explore a little more because I mean, we can't just throw a million dollars at it and in tax dollars, we got to be responsible in that regard, so.
There, I, I think there are areas where rock would help where we got black dirt showing through now.
Well, and there's.
But it is difference between three dollars and eleven dollars a ton. I don't know if the hauling would be a lot different.
Well, your hauling would probably be the same, but you'd haul it once instead of five times maybe for the same section of road. I mean, there's a, there's a frost boil about a mile south of my place that was bad in nineteen or twenty, whatever year it was, I believe. And it got tore up by some heavy semi-traffic, and it was in rough shape for a while, but they put a little rock in there in this spring. That area never moved a bit. I mean, it was solid as with all the weather we had. The rain, the snow, the freezing thawing, never left a track in that area where the rock was. So I'm not, and, and that was spread thick and it was, it took a while to get worked into the surface, so I don't know that we need to bury it on everything, but I think if we can get out there earlier and if we can do a thinner rate, we could go farther. But if you get out there earlier, it'll support it more, so then you don't actually bust through the, the crust instead of, um, riding up on top.
I don't know. They're, they're trying to build a hog set up in your area up north, and they're going to ruin that road. They're ready.
Yeah, Brian, Brian was talking about that.
They're already got ruined. They're just going to make it worse. It's a no maintenance road to begin with.
And that's something where the, the hog companies, like Doug's talked about, the taxes those buildings pay. Maybe some of those companies, like they were just pulled out a feed truck by Bancroft.
Yeah.
Some of them, if they're having issues getting products to their sites, maybe the companies would step in and say, we'll pay for the rock if you guys haul it and work it in. I mean, that'd be, that'd be probably one of the first places I would look would be Smithfield and Christensen and some of those others that have, yeah, that have service that they need those roads and they depend on them, and they're hauling heavy loads all the time. I mean, I think that would be a great place to start, but.
Damn, why aren't we getting these credit card statements before the meeting?
She forgot to bring them. It's.
We, that's happening every, every, almost all the time.
I will talk.
These have to come in before we approve them.
Okay.
Like I.
Well, they're all, they're all on your iPad.
Yeah, they listed. They don't show all the individual stuff, but do they?
No, but you don't see that usually till after you've made the motion and passed it and.
Yeah, I mean, like here it is. They bought eighty-two dollars. It's a donation to get for a house fire. That's really kosher, but.
It's kind of what they do always.
That is under emergency management.
Yeah.
For a house, a house fire.
It would, they would, it would be for the personnel and stuff.
It's for the firemen that are at the scene.
Yeah, and then there was a computer bot up at my laptop computer. Is that supposed to be done through Derek?
Who was that from?
That's for next fiscal year. That budget's changed.
Yeah.
So for now, if they had something to replace, it's probably, it's, it's part of the plan. So, yeah, that would.
Thousand sixty-nine dollar computer box.
So what department's that?
Is that also under emergency management?
Right, right, where it says on there, it was.
I think. Wasn't that true? Are EMS are emergency management? Which one of them wanted your computer?
Yeah, all, all of those.
It's probably.
All of those are listed on.
Conservation.
In your package.
County Conservation.
County Conservation. They got their own board.
Yeah. And, and for the stuff through Derek, that's not changing till next fiscal year anyway. And I don't know if they're included in that or not. I think they might be, but I'm not sure.
I'd like to see these before the, these before the meeting instead of always coming in. Yeah, late in the day.
We, yeah, well, years ago, we used to get them before the meeting started and look through them.
Right.
So that's supposed to be.
We're not supposed to do that.
So, I mean, they're credit cards. We really need to watch them. I've got trouble. You know, that's years ago, but not paying attention to them.
Don't forget, before us, we have our budget hearings for the budget.
Max turn. What time is that?
Eight thirty.
It's during the regular.
Yeah.
In case anybody asks. People have asked me how much more money we're going to collect. I tell them, actually, we're going to go over the real, real services.
Well, that's just on our levy, but yeah.
But the other one's going up three point five, which is.
Yeah, if you look at the total taxes, it's actually going up quite a bit, and part of that is EMS.
Yeah.
No, yeah, part of it's EMS and which was voted on.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I have.
Quite a bit of it. Have you got anything from the hospital yet?
Yes, they brought their budget in yesterday, but, um, I have not had a chance to certify yet.
Okay, so they're asking you, you don't know they're asking.
That, that's, no, I didn't.
Anything else on the budget or anything?
Oh, a point for the budget with the, um, discussion we had on Saturday. We were one of the very few counties in the state that actually lowered our taxes when the mental health levy came off.
Yeah.
So you can see that in the numbers for all of us that have it on our computers here. Between twenty-one and twenty-two, well, twenty-one, twenty-two actuals was nine or twenty-two, twenty-three was nine, four, four, three, so. Me, and me and Tammy were talking yesterday, looked it up. Mental health was about three hundred thousand ballpark. So our increase was a little bit less than that actually for, so that went away and then some kind of filled this place, but now we'll have all the stuff we're dealing with plus EMS that was voted on and all that, so we're there'll be a significant jump in taxes for this year.
And Carol, after we talked yesterday, did a little bit of mind looking, we also had, uh, health insurance. We didn't have those rates yet.
Yeah, but yeah, just food for thought that we were one of the few that actually did. Take that out of the budget to some extent.
Not Riley Wills wants to send out postcards to every person that has property and tell them about our.
If, if, if we're raising more than three percent.
Yeah.
Let's be a postcard to every, every property owner.
You're gonna send them three months best.
No, that's going to be in law for us to send it.
I knew that. You really appreciate that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Not enough.
Yeah, no, the new one is a postcard to everyone.
Why does the state send out, send out a postcard every time they, they do something stupid?
You could have told them that if you were. You could have told them that if you were there.
Did you ask them?
You'd be sending out postcards and stacks this thick every week.
They should, they should.
I, I, I asked if he realized there's a cost to that, and he said yes.
He said it was worth it, I think that's was his comment, you know, he said it'd be worth it, worth the cost.
And, and I, I did follow up saying, I don't disagree with more information is better, but I followed that up with the limits on our tax, and I said, you might want to consider that, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how far it'll get considered, but that's the proposal.
Be spending more tax dollars to tell people about the tax dollars.
That we're spending.
That we're spending.
If, if the legislation goes, so we can't grow more than two point five percent anyway, or so it's not gonna matter.
No. No, in, in.
It, I, I would say it's kind of, it's not far from being finished, but it's not close to being finished either, so I think there'll still be some substantial discussions about it, but.
Well, I think no matter what happens, they're gonna have discussion on property taxes, and it's all gonna come back to the county share of the property taxes. That's what I got out of it, I don't know if anybody disagrees with that.
That'd be pretty close, that's about the only thing they're gonna try and affect.
Which then they're gonna do away with income tax in the state, cause they have too much money, but they're worried that the county's spending.
And I, I mean, you remember when I highlighted that their budget is looking good, because they pass all the stuff down to us to do?
Yep. Oh, well, anything else come for the good of Cassuth County, other than our irritation with the state legislators? Then roads. Nope.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Whacter.
I'll second.
Whacter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're.
Thirty.
Wow.
I'm a dog.
Um.
Now let's do a break before IT.
Oh, wait, we got IT.
We got IT? Oh, we do, don't we? Yeah, I'm ready for a break.